Well, good evening, everyone. It's 6:15 on October the 21st. I'll call it over to the regular meeting of the Perry Municipal Authority. Roll call, please.
Strowler.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Here. We do have a quorum present this time. I'd like to invite Brandon Armstrong from Churchill Square, if he would, to lead us in our vacation.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this day. We thank you so much for this amazing fall weather we're having. We thank you for that added moisture we've had late in the year, just to help out our local agricultural. Father, I just lift up each individual around this room this evening, around this table. I just thank you so much for their service and their commitment to our community and just improving the life within it. Father, we thank you so much for them and the time that they give. Father, I just looked up the agenda they have before them, each task that they will work through this evening. I pray for good communication in any decision that must be made. Father, I just pray that there's careful thought in everything that is out there, dear Lord. Father, I just pray. And again, thank you so much for them, their service. And I just looked up this meeting to you and the production of it, and pray it is in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item number one, the consent agenda. There's one item on your consent agenda, and that's the minutes from our last gathering. What would you like to do with it? Move to approve?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Thank you, Gordon. We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Will there be discussion before going to a vote? Seeing none, votes in order.
Strowler.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now, comments from those assembled. Anybody wish to make comments on items not on their PMA agenda? We'll take those from you. Comments from those assembled? Comments from those assembled? Seeing none, move to item number five, proclamations, accommodations, reports, inquiries of governing body. Very well, move to item number six, do business. Seeing new business needs to come before the PMA. Seeing none, move to item number seven.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion, a second, to adjourn. Not available, roll call.
Strowler.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Okay, well, call it over to the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Perry for October 21st, 2013. It's 6:17. Roll call, please.
Strowler.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. And just for those that are watching at home wondering, what's item D? What we just approved was authorization to buy the Thanksgiving turkeys and the Christmas hams for our City of Perry employees, as we generally do annually. But I think you were referring to the fact that we've had it as a holdout agenda item in the past, but we have a new person putting together agenda items, and she likes to handle it this way, which is fine. Okay. We'll move to item number four, comments from those assembled.
I'll add one. Next time, I'll add a couple.
So you'll want to read your consent agenda pretty close from here on out.
Pretty soon, we'll walk in and just have consent.
Yeah. One vote or none. All right. Comments from those assembled? Anybody wish to make comments not on our City Council agenda? We'll take those from you. Comments from those assembled? Comments from those assembled? Very well, item number five is proclamations, accommodations, reports, inquiries of governing body. Plan speed, record tonight. Mary, item number six, city manager report.
Okay, I'll try to not bog this down too much. The open house at City Hall in recognition of the American Public Power Week was really pretty successful. Dixie and Autumn did a great job of bringing together items and setting up a display and an exhibit and refreshments, and quite a few people stopped by to take advantage of informational materials. They really liked the promotional items and the cookies, and they were kind of popular, too. And we would like to note that we've honored Mr. Ed Malison, stopped in towards the end of the open house and visited with us, and we shared information with him, and he is always a delight to talk to. Looking ahead, I've had a little bit of time. Now that I've had some time on the City of Perry, we're going to have a meeting with the tradesmen, which is the plumbers and the mechanical contractors and the electrical contractors, and also the general contractors who do work here within the City of Perry. And we're going to schedule that for Tuesday, October 29th. It'll be here in this room, and it'll be at 10:00 a.m. That's coffee break time, and I'm told that's the best time ever. So, really, this is an effort to establish some good communications and receive input from the professionals, and I look at this as a positive step forward to improve and hopefully even simplify the city processes where possible. So, those letters are going out. I don't know if they went out today or not, but if they didn't, they'll go tomorrow, and so hopefully, you know, we're looking at this as an opportunity for us to listen to the concerns and suggestions of how to do things better, simpler, and make it easier to do business here in the City of Perry. So hopefully, we'll have a good turnout. Quickly, the replacement of the sewer line serving Country Club Drive and up on North 7th, that's completed by City Crews, and there'll be some cleanup, and the power pole replacement is scheduled this week, weather permitting, which I assume it should be good. Just a brief update, the airport hangars that the council authorized out at the airport recently, hangar number four is complete, rented and occupied, and hangar five is close to being complete, and we have a prospective renter. So we're happy for that to be finished up and onboard. The industrial park road is essentially done. Everybody should go out there and take a look, but it passed the compaction test requirements far beyond the minimum requirements, which we were happy about, and they started delivering rock last week. That is a pretty good stretch of road, and so it's going to take a little while to get all that rock there delivered and spread, so... But essentially, it's done, and we're happy. OMPA provided a couple of employee training sessions recently. The one this past week, J.B. Smith, former sheriff in Texas, his presentation method was through storytelling, and so he had a lot of good stories to tell after being a sheriff in Texas for as long as he'd been there. So I'm not sure I bought every... But everything he said was truthful, but they were good stories, and he was able to make a point, usually. Personnel update.
Wow. You elaboration on that one.
Well, it just, you know, it was, you know, I mean, you can imagine law enforcement. I mean, they get into some pickles, you know, sometimes with the people that they're dealing with, and so between pursuits and either in cars or on foot or animals, they, you know, it's just, you just never know what you're going to face when you're in law enforcement. And it was all about having a good attitude. Anyway, personnel update. In a minute, I've got to introduce Pam Riggs. She's our new library director, but I am extremely pleased to announce that today we had a... We signed up, and he started, an electric lineman, journeyman.
Yay!
And we were... And so we're really happy about that, and we have a couple more. I hate to jinx this process because we don't want to say a whole lot about others, but we do have a couple more that look like there it's going to work out. So Brian is going to have some help. I think everybody's happy to hear that. And we did bring a police officer onboard today, started a new police officer, so it'll take some time for... He is police certified, but he does have to go back to a refresher course and, you know, get used to the Perry protocol, way of doing things, police policies and procedures. So, anyway, and now I'm really... I'm pleased to introduce Pam Riggs. She began her duties as the library director last week, and as she's coming up to the podium, I'm going to let her tell you what she wants you to know about herself, so that... Not that there's anything bad, but she brings a ton of experience and education, and her personality definitely lends itself to working with the public, and so with that, I'll turn it over to Pam.
Hi, I'm so happy to be here. First things first, the friends, the library is having a book sale this week. It starts tomorrow and runs through Friday from 9:00 to 5:00. The sale is located at the National Guard Armory. Okay. I'm so happy to be here. I was looking for a new job. I have a husband and a son, and we lived in Phoenix. I'm from Kansas City. We did not want to be in Phoenix. I have been looking at job descriptions. I have been looking at communities. Whenever I found a City of Perry library director job description, I read it, and I thought, oh, that's a match. And then I looked at the websites. I looked at the city-county data. I looked at the Perry website. I looked at everything. I thought, oh, this is looking good. And then I had my husband look at the same information, because you want to make sure he's onboard. I started working at a library when I was 19. I was a page, bookshelves, substitute clerk, half-time clerk, full-time clerk, and then I went to a larger... Or another branch, and I was assistant librarian, and then I became a branch manager at a small community-sized branch, and I loved that job. Got married, moved to Phoenix, and I worked the last 10 years at a community college in Arizona. I have a master's in library science and a bachelor's in management, and I'm so happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one final item. Dixie's going to be going to Clerks and Treasures Conference this weekend, Stillwater, so... And it's not that the Clerks and Treasures are a rowdy bunch, but you might want to steer clear of Stillwater Wednesday and Thursday, so... It's always fun to go to their events because they are a fun group, and they know how to have fun. And the city managers' group is kind of a stick-in-the-bud group, so it's always more fun to go to the Clerks and Treasures meetings. Right, Russ?
Yes.
Yes.
For sure.
That's all I have.
Questions of Mary? Any questions or comments for later, before?
Okay.
Mary, thank you very much. Well, well, well. Item number seven, chief financial officer's report, and look who's here.
Meredith's back. Oh.
Uh-huh. It's Russ, back from his injury. Nice to have you back.
You know, let me just suggest to all of those of you out there that think that playing football is a great idea, at some point in your life, I promise you, it catches up to you. Mine, unfortunately, earlier rather than later, I guess, but technology and everything else today, back at it and moving around well. Thank you for your all's cares and concerns and inquiries along the way, but I am much better, happy to be back. Talking about numbers again, so let's get through this real quickly, because somebody has some bogging they want to go watch this evening, I think. Anybody? I didn't even have any takers on that. Cash reports in front of you, and as you can see, we have an increase in our cash number. Utility cash increase is what we expect each month in, month out. As we close out the summer, this is when we make our money. We will slow down to the amount of money we really make over the next couple of months and then go into the winter months, when we just want to get by because of the volume of sales and the things that we have. But overall, cash looks good. There's nothing in there that jumps out as something that really bothers me. Moving on to your budget versus actuals for the general fund. For the city itself, you'll see we're at about 30% of our budget number for sales tax. We're a quarter of the way through the year, so 25% is our number. We like that plus 5% right now. If we can carry... We'll carry that out through the rest of the year. We will end up at about plus 12 and a half, 13%, whatever the year is set and done, so that is good. We did receive notice today from the Oklahoma Tax Commission that we will be getting the nice... We don't know the size of it in dollars exactly, but we will get a little stipend in December that will augment the number for December, so that was unplanned and will be a little bit of bonus, so another good number that we have to look forward to there. You'll see use taxes also up. Running on down, one of the numbers that really will kick out, and Betty will be very happy for this, we continue to set a new number in economic development in our hotel-motel tax. We have averaged over $40,000 a month for the first quarter of the year, which we... With the increase of the 3 cents, we're still up compared to where we were even last year, so those numbers are looking very good. I was provided by a couple of other communities that we work with and look at, and motel-motel numbers in Perry look really strong compared to some of the other numbers that I've seen around, and some of the projections that we have going into the fall for some slowdown with the oil and gas activity in those pieces. Perry's really looking good at this point from the economic development side, so we like that hotel-motel tax, and hopefully we'll continue its collecting patterns. The rest of those expenses, as you run out through, there are all things that were either specific items, either land that was purchased under economic development, that's why that expense is so high. The rest of those are more seasonal items that... Or specific capital outlay items that we've already bought and put into place, for instance, the new police vehicles, if you guys want to see those. Got to see one today. They are very sharp and look really nice, so the rest of those expenses are in line. Flip over to the municipal authority. Like I told you at the beginning, we're going to make money the first three months out of the year, and so we've done that. Our electric and our water and sewer all be up. The water expenses are related to some capital outlay that we're doing there, but all in all, those numbers are looking good. I don't have any complaints at this point. I hope that the fall continues strong, and as we get into the first of the next fiscal year... Or next calendar year, a lot of people's fiscal years, that hopefully the numbers will stay strong, and we won't have anything to worry about as we finish up the fiscal year in 2014. Any questions?
Glad to have you back.
Thank you. Nice to be back. Not laying flat and telling.
Any additional questions on the... All right, Russ, thank you. Move to item number eight, which is consider nomination of chance for the position of Ward Three, post to city council member. Take votes or nominations as appropriate. Council members, as you're well aware, we received the resignation from Mr. Webb as a result of his new employment, and after research, we've determined that this is an appointment by the nomination by the entire council, and that appointed person would serve until the next general election, of which there would be a ballot question. So with that, we prepared you all last... Two weeks ago, that this would be on the agenda, give you an opportunity to think it through, and with that, I'd open it up for discussion and potential nominations.
I'd like to nominate, and I think that's the right position, isn't... Wasn't Marvin Demet in that position last time? Is that his position?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd like to nominate Marvin Demet.
Okay. Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, on the nomination. Will it be... Is there any other nominations? And by the way, I guess, have you talked with Marvin? He has a willingness to serve.
No, but he ran. I remember he ran last time, so I think he would probably...
We haven't talked to him?
No.
I know of one that's been talked to, Clayton Dow, that would be willing to serve on it.
And he has been talked to?
Yes.
As I understand.
Yes.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, are you... Well, we'll take these one at a time. We have a motion and a second on the nomination of Marvin, and he has not been spoken to, so we don't know that he would accept or not, correct?
No, but I think he would.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure he would.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Will there be any discussion on that before we go into a vote?
I don't like throwing water on fire, but I talked to him last month, just in general, asking if he was... If he wanted to serve, and he was pretty negative in his response to me. I don't know if he was joking or being serious. That's the impression I got.
Well, I saw him a week ago, last... A week ago, at the football game. He didn't say anything about being negative about it.
But he didn't say he would be willing?
No, we just talked about some city business.
I just think it's kind of putting him in an uncomfortable position, and it'd be nice to know if he was willing to do it. This is my thought.
Any other comments or thoughts? We do have Clayton, that I understand has been talked to, and he is willing to serve. And we have the motion and a second for Marvin, but we don't know that he is willing to serve.
I'll second this nomination.
Okay. Bryce, the right thing to do is to take the nominations as they came in with their second vote, correct?
Yes, you could do that. You know, you could continue it to check on whether Marvin would serve, too.
Table it.
Yeah, you wouldn't want to appoint and then have a...
And not know if he's willing to accept it.
To accept it. That wouldn't be good public, you know, policy. You do have 60 days, so... But you can... The way it is, you should... If you want to vote on him, you would vote on Marvin first and...
And then go to the second...
Yeah.
Second name that we had, the motion and second.
Yes. You could also do ballots, just as long as you kept the ballots. Put your name on the ballot, you marked the name. You could do it that way, and you could collect the ballots, and whoever got the majority, because that's all you need, a majority of the vote, he would be the nominee.
What would the council like to do? We have two names on the table, both with motions and seconds to go to a vote. Would you prefer to take it up in a vote? Would you prepare to... Would you like to table this until the next meeting, till you can talk with your candidate? Or would you like to do ballot voting? Do you have a... Does anybody have a...
Could we table it, since I don't know who they're talking about?
Clayton Dow?
Yeah, I don't know him.
Did you get Conley's email?
Okay.
It's your vote, Russ.
I personally think that we don't need to make a vote unless we are for or against Marvin until some kind of correspondence takes place with him.
Which I haven't done yet.
Yeah.
So... And I do like the idea of the ballot vote.
Well, then, does anybody else have preference on ballot or vote? Then let me make a suggestion. Let me suggest at our next council meeting, give Betty, you, and Lynn an opportunity to talk with your candidate, and then we'll be prepared... We'll open it up for additional nominations, okay? It's the fair thing to do. And then we'll plan on voting via ballot. Fair enough?
Yeah.
Is that agreeable with everyone?
Yep.
That being the case, then, I would love to entertain a motion to table item number eight.
I'll make a motion to table item number eight.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to table item number eight till the next gathering of this council. Everybody understand what you'd be voting on?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call, please.
Strowler.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Okay. We'll go now to item number nine, which is consider approval of fiscal year 2013-2014 renewal participation agreement for general liability vehicle insurance plan with the Oklahoma Municipal Insurance Group, an authorized annual premium of $67,281.83. Council members, you're well aware of our annual renewals with O-MAG, our insurance carrier. I think all of us are pleased to see and pleased to report that this is a reduction in premium. There's a couple of reasons for this, and it's in your background information. They are... And it's a little bit confusing on this dividend thing, and I thought I'd just quickly just kind of explain. They used to have a program, and you all remember, we used to recognize that when we received those checks from O-MAG, the reimbursements. We actually would pay into the premium a portion for towards the loss fund, and then depending on our losses as it relates to the City of Perry, we would get rebated that. It, you know, gives us incentive not to have any losses, and we would get that in the form of a dividend. They've actually done away with that program, and what they do is they price the loss payment into the premium renewals, so that there's not a...
It's like a credit.
Yeah, it's like a credit on the premium itself. By the way, we have an O-MAG representative in the room today, so if I get off base, you can certainly feel free to comment. The other thing is, is that for a number of years, we have paid a small percentage in our premium towards a local agent. Years and... For many years, many councils felt like that there was some value in having a local agent to help administer the policy. What we've discovered over the years... By the way, that local agent has since retired, Mike Doughty's been with, you know, in some form with the city for a number of years. Over the years, O-MAG has really taken the front seat in the administration of those policies, and the value, you know, just wasn't there to the extent it was in the early days when O-MAG created the program. So I think Mary met with the local agent's company and had a discussion and told them that we were not going to renew that relationship and allow O-MAG to serve it directly, which is about $9,100 savings to the policy. So that's the two reasons why the policy is less, and it's directly related to those two changes. Questions or comments on the O-MAG policy? By the way, in case for the newer members, O-MAG is owned by its members. This market is pretty tight. In other words, there's just not a lot of providers of this kind of product, insuring municipalities, so it's great to have the O-MAG program. They're insuring over 500 municipalities, and we've been with them for a number of years, like another 500 of our contemporaries. Questions or comments? What would you like to do with the renewal?
Motion.
We have a motion, a second. And a second. We have a motion, a second, to approve the renewal participation agreement for 2013-2014 on liability vehicle insurance plan with the Oklahoma Municipal Insurance Group for an authorized annual premium payment of $67,281.83. Will there be questions or comments before going to a vote? Okay, let's move to a vote.
Strowler.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Okay, now we're going to move to item number 10, which is consider approval of the 13-14 renewal participation agreement for property insurance with the Oklahoma Municipal Insurance Group, an authorized annual premium of $51,366.90. Last year's... Very similar story. The last year's premium was roughly $50,440. This year's premium is $51,366. There was a dividend program, very similar to my first explanation, along with a local insurance payment. The reason that there's not a disparity... So we've got, we've added additional, at least a million dollars in property coverage. And that's why some of this, some of this difference was eaten up.
But the rate remains the same.
But the rate remains the same? That's exactly right. Thank you, Mary.
What did we budget for this?
You're in a meeting now, Russ.
Oh, the total between both of them was $140,000 that we had budgeted. So we figured if we have increases, it wasn't substantial enough.
Does this include the new building found here for?
Yes. All right, what would you like to do with it?
Make the motion we approve.
Thank you, Betty.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. We have a motion and a second to approve the 2013-2014 renewal participation agreement for property insurance with O-MAG, an authorized annual premium payment of $51,366.90. Will there be questions or comments before going to a vote? Seeing none, votes in order, roll call.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes, okay. Now we'll move to item number 11, which is considered approval of resolution 2013-20 of the City Council for the City of Perry, Oklahoma, amending 2005 capital improvement plan of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, by the addition of certain street to the street inventory found on page nine and designating such streets as mandatory. Council members, we have adopted, adopt these plans as a result of several grant applications that we put in. We identify them as priority. What lacked on our priority list were the planned and promised improvements out at our commercial park. And so we are adding those to the important to-do list and that's what this agenda item covers, should you elect to vote for. Questions or comments? What would you like to do?
Who to approve, 2013-20?
Second.
Thank you, Gordon, thank you, Tim. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Will there be discussion? Seeing none, you're voting on resolution 2013-20 of the City Council of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, amending the 2005 capital improvement plan for the City of Perry, Oklahoma, by the addition of certain streets to the street inventory found on page nine and designating such streets as mandatory. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yep.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now we move to item number 12, which is considered approval of ordinance 2013-24 amended chapter 18 of Perry Municipal Code entitled Fee Schedule. I will read this, the whole title prior to moving to the vote. Council, this is what we talked about at our last meeting. In fact, we had our same guests were with us last meeting as it relates to the vendor permitting. Mary has worked through this and has made the following suggestion, that the ordinance, which is currently set at $10 a day per vendor, be amended to provide for a $75 annual licensing fee for Noble County resident vendors. If you're not a Noble County resident, then that fee, annual permitting fee, would be $250. Questions or comments on the ordinance? We had good discussion on this in our last meeting. What would you like to do?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Will there be discussion? We're going to read the whole title before we go to the vote, because I'm required to do so. Any questions?
Can I ask a question?
No. Yes.
When we have our Cherokee Strip Celebration and the food vendors come in from out of town to be a part of that, will they be subject to this $250?
I don't believe they are required to do the vendor permit. I don't recall any of that, so if Brett was still here, we could ask him, but...
I'm right here.
Our chamber representative.
Yes, yes, they could.
I think that that is right. I believe that historically, in wanting to help the chamber have a successful event, we purposely waive that one day deal downtown. I do believe that they're required to sign up so that we know who the vendors are and I'm sure he checks their licensing. But if, let me just leave it like this. If we're successful with this vote tonight and we find out that something's different, we may bring, come back for an amendment. I think it's the intent to encourage participation in vendors on the Cherokee Strip Celebration and not discourage, and certainly...
And probably on Spring Fest, too.
And certainly on those special events, if they are some, for some reason included in this, we'll probably come back to the council with some sort of change to the...
They would still only pay $10 per vendor.
They have the option, right? So the worst thing to do is pay $10. That's a good point. Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second? Okay. You're considering approval of the ordinance 2013-24 amended chapter 18 of Perry Municipal Code entitled Fee Schedule by providing for certain amended amendments to section 9-207, providing for an annual licensing fee for resident and non-resident, itinerant merchant and transient street vendors who exclusively sell food and/or beverages, would be asking for the savings, severability, repeated or codification penalty in the clearing emergency. There's no further questions, we'll move to a vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Motion on the emergency?
So moved.
Thank you, Brett, thank you, Gordon. We have a motion and a second on the emergency, roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
No.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Okay, that passes too. Despite Conley's efforts, that passes. We'll move to item number 13, which is considered approval of ordinance 2013-25, amending, which looks like 25A, try to trigger. It's 25 amending chapter 12 of the Perry Municipal Code 2012, providing for certain amendments to section 12, 312, including amendment to subsection B, providing for the correct fee schedule, section for zoning, by the addition of a new subsection D, providing for state law notice requirements for zoning requests involving treatment facilities, multiple family facilities, transitional living facilities, halfway houses and any household facility that may be used for medical or non-medical detoxification. Bryce, do you want to talk through the changes and why they're in front of us this evening?
Yeah, this ordinance is basically cleaning up a few things in our zoning code. The first correction is the code referred to the wrong section for the rezoning application fee. So it's a Scrivener's error that is now corrected. It points you to the correct section for the zoning application fee. The second thing involves this additional statutory notice when someone is filing a zoning application for a treatment facility, multi-family facilities, transitional living facilities, halfway houses, housing or facility that may be used for medical or non-medical detoxification. That's state law. So, you know, really don't have anything to do with that. It's just that we put those provisions about how to, how to zone, those are in the code, so that the public can come in and look at it. They don't have to look at the state law. That was changed a bit ago. I don't know that we have had any applications for any of that, but the requirement is that you have to give a notice to more people in a longer distance from the exterior boundary of the property that the zoning is going to go on. So that's state law and we put it in the code. This next one, our code said that if the planning commission denied rezoning request, that the applicant would have to appeal for that to come to the city council. They'd have to file an appeal to have that go up. We have always considered approvals or denials. We have sent those on up to you. And it seemed to me that there was no reason to change that. You know, you should get the recommendation of the planning commission without the applicant having to do anything. That's the way we've always done it. I wanted the code to be consistent with the way we've always done it. And I think that's fair to the folks. Why make them appeal? They filed the application, they put the money out, send the question on up to the city council without regard to what the recommendation of the planning commission is. So that's what that is doing, making it consistent with the way that we have always conducted business. The final thing has to do with repeat applications for rezoning. There's nothing in our code that stops somebody from filing for zoning, getting denied, and then just coming back and filing again and again. It was brought up to me by Mary. This is the one thing in this section that I would consider that would be new or different that you're being asked to call on. So what this really is, is if you filed, you've been denied, you have to wait at least one year. Now, of course, there are those cases when, when perhaps they come back with a better mousetrap and we very well may want to grant it. We don't want this to impede development. So if it's quicker than a year and the city manager and the city council agree, well then we'll hear that application. So that's an exception. Secondly, if the action or the application is brought by a subsequent property owner, the property changed hands, that would be a reason to allow it to, to be brought forward. It's a different property owner. You know, we have a zoning case today. It's the same property owner, so that one wouldn't have fit. And third, the application requests a different rezoning classification. Those would be exceptions. So the city manager asked that I draft something that at least put a time requirement in there. And I will tell you that that issue has come before the planning commission. The planning commission have themselves discussed that. We need to put some kind of limitation in there. So we are recommending that you, that first discuss it, but if you like it, pass the whole ordinance and apply the emergency.
Questions of Bryce?
What is considered a multiple family facility? That's not like an apartment, is it?
Sure.
That would be an apartment complex?
Uh huh, be an apartment complex.
Duplex. Duplex, yeah.
Or a duplex, okay.
Other questions or comments related to the ordinance?
The reason I ask that is because on the bottom of the page it says for any housing that may be used for medical or non-medical detoxification. So...
Let me see. Multi-fam, yeah, it's not, yeah, it's an or. So it'd include multi-family housing. That does not have to be related to the, for the alcohol purpose. And that's just giving, that's just the requirement to give more people, more people notice.
Other questions or comments? Okay, what would you like to do with the council?
Motion to approve this ordinance.
Second.
Thank you, Bill, thank you, Tim. We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance 2013-25, amending chapter 12 of Perry Municipal Code 2012, providing for certain amendments in section 12, 312. Will there be discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none, votes in order.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Conley, would you like to make a motion on the emergency?
Next second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you, Conley, thank you, Gordon. On the emergency clause, roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Okay, very well. We'll move to item number 14, which is considered approval of renewal quote for aviation insurance, Managers Inc. for general liability insurance coverage by Ace Property and Casualty Insurance Company in the amount of $2,548, waiving terrorism coverage at Perry Municipal Airport. This is an annually approved policy with the same carrier. And in years past, we have waived, it ties recommendation, the terrorism coverage. Questions or comments?
It says here, does it only cost $319 or is it the $2,500?
The terrorism coverage is $319 more. I think a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the renewal. Will there be discussion?
I have a question.
Four questions.
When we had a man that came on the property, was it two or three years ago? And he...
Four years ago.
Four years ago?
Yes, ma'am.
And he got on one of the machines and tore up the house and all this kind of stuff. Would that be considered?
No.
Wouldn't? Okay.
No, that was an idiot.
And this, this covers idiot, idiot damage.
Okay, it covers idiots, okay.
So exactly what does this cover? If you don't mind me asking.
Here, Ty.
It's your liability insurance on just that example of the man coming on. It covers any kind of damage that the city would be responsible for. We do not cover the damage where one airplane runs into another one. It covers strictly us employees out there and taking care of the airport. And anything that would happen like tornado or any of that, coverage would be covered into this policy.
Mostly filling fuel tanks. It's, it's we fill...
On that same thing, we also have a $5 million insurance policy that is provided by the fueling company, Philip 66, or Assent, who is our people we deal with, that covers us on fueling any airplane.
That's where the real liability is.
That costs us nothing. That's provided by the retailer.
I just wanted to know because I didn't want to overlap our insurance. We were talking about putting Walgo insurance on hangars and I didn't see the point of having...
Now, the insurance on the two, on the city-owned hangars have to be there.
Say it again.
This insurance on the city-owned hangars, this, your fire and casualty insurance, like you normally have on any building that the city owns, that's there. But privately-owned hangars, we don't insure. That's their problem.
Which is covered by item 10.
So if someone just randomly ran into a privately-owned hangar, is that the...
That's between the two people.
The two parts, okay.
Unless we stuck a pole in the middle of a taxiway and he run into it and then hit the hangar, then we'd have a different situation. But, yeah, it's only what the employees and the equipment that we use are responsible for.
Thank you, Ty. Further questions? We have a motion and a second. Further, further questions? Betty, you comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. No further questions?
We'll move to the...
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes, now we move to item number 15, which is acceptance of donation of real property from Harriet Mayle Use. Council members, you can see that Harriet has a desire to donate lots 27, 28, 29 and block five of the Use Rel Edition of the City of Perry. That in general location, that is just south of the softball fields there in the Heterofer Softball Complex. If this is something that you don't have a problem with, we're looking for, to authorize the acceptance of the property and to allow us to issue a donation letter to Harriet Mayle.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second to accept the donation and issue a donation letter. Will there be discussion? Seeing none, we'll entertain a vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now we move to item number 16, which is considered approval of resolution 2013-19 of the City Council of the City of Perry, authorizing lease purchase of certain equipment from Caterpillar Financial Services Corp., identified as transaction number 2131818. If you're getting a feeling of deja vu, you did approve the purchase of, of the Caterpillar and you did authorize the financing of that, you know, through, through, through the lease, through the lease company. And we did talk about the rate, 2.5%. So we thought that that's all that the financing company would need. They have requested a resolution to be on file and that's why you have it in front of you.
Was that $79,000, was that after the trade-in or before the trade-in?
After the trade-in. So it's net 79.
Okay.
I moved to approve Resolution 2013-19.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Will there be discussion or questions before moving to a vote? Seeing none, you'll be voting on the Resolution 213-19, authorizing the lease purchase of certain equipment for Caterpillar Financial Services Corp., identified with the transaction number on your agenda. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Ben.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Aye.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item number 17 is new business, and new business needs to come before the Perry City Council. New business. Seeing none, we'll move to item number 18, which is Consider Convenience in Executive Session to Conduct a Performance Review of the City Manager's Required Pursuant to the Existing Written Agreement dated October 26, 2012, pursuant to Oklahoma Statute 307B1. Remove.
Second.
We have a motion second to convene into executive session. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Thank you, folks. Motion to reconvene.
Second.
We have a motion second to reconvene in Director's Session. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Here.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item number 20, any action that's necessary pursuant to our executive session tonight?
Make a motion. We approve our city manager's contract with changes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the city manager's contract for 2013-2014. Was that 10? With the changes? Any questions, comments, before we move to a vote? Seeing none, votes in order.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Any other action needs to be taken as a result of executive session? Seeing none, we move to item number 21. Make a motion, what a...
Second.
Third. Roll call.
Stroller.
Yes.
Moxley.